The Pasadena Area Community College District Board of Trustees Meeting of Wednesday, June 7, 2017 will come to order. Call to order, roll call please.
Dr. Salvage.
Here.
Dr. Fellow, Mr. Osterling.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Hilsman.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Wa.
Here.
Ms. Grippian.
We have four items to discuss in closed session. Is there any public comment on the items that we will be discussing in closed session? These items will consist of Government Code 54957 Evaluation of Employee Superintendent President, Government Code Section 54957 Public Employee Appointment, Government Code 54957.6 Conference with Labor Negotiators, Government Code 54957.6 Conference with Unrepresented Employees. We will now adjourn to closed session. The Pasadena Area Community College District Meeting of Wednesday, June 7, 2017 will come to order. Roll call please.
Dr. Salvage.
Here.
Dr. Fellow, Mr. Osterling.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Hilsman.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Wa.
Here.
Ms. Grippian.
Here.
Dr. Grippian, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda items. Are there any trustees who would like to reorder or alter the agenda?
We have to approve.
There a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as printed. All in favor? Oh, excuse me, student trustee?
Aye.
Trustees? It passes 601 with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. We have an oath of office to administer at this point. Let's see, okay, that's next. Okay, our newly elected student trustee, please join me at the podium. Okay, have you looked at this? Do you know what it is? Oh, okay. I'm going to tell you the words to say. You'll be doing it into the microphones. Okay. And you just have to repeat after me. Okay, this is the oath of office as student trustee of the Pasadena Area Community College District. Please repeat after me, aye, and state your name.
I, Emily Akshian.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties which upon I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I give you our newest student trustee. You can take your seat at the dais, and I hope you know what you're getting into. Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Akshian, maybe if you have guests that you'd like to introduce?
Yes, I have my family here with me.
Could you ask them to rise?
Oh, sure. Rise, please.
Thank you very much for being here. She's going to need all of the support she can get. It's a big load, being a student trustee in addition to being a student. We wish you well.
President Rudy, I'm sorry, President Salvage, I wanted to also welcome trustee Akshian, but I also wanted to thank trustee Grippian, former trustee Grippian. She, I think, did just an excellent job this year. Oh, okay, I see Dr. Grippian is actually going to do something, but I just wanted to give her my personal thanks and just say, you know, every year we have such great leadership from our students, and I never think it could get any better, and then we just get another new group of leaders, and they're just fabulous, so just want to thank her.
We would like former student trustee Grippian to please join us at the podium.
Well, tonight, it's a great night for us. We'll have three recognitions. We'll start with our outgoing student trustee, Ms. Nune Grippian. Nune has served the students with distinction as a student trustee. In the process, she has provided a key perspective on the deliberations of this body and represented the viewpoint of her colleagues effectively on a range of important issues from transportation to cost reductions to tuition and the OER, Open Educational Resources. This fall, she will continue her education at one of the nation's most prestigious institutions as she completes her undergraduate studies at Yale University. Nune, your composure, articulation, and dedication have made us all proud, and on behalf of Pasadena City College, I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And now here is board president, trustee Dr. Ross Salvage.
Being a student trustee involves a lot more than just meeting here with the rest of the board. There's a lot of work that's done in the background, and I've seen Nune at a number of the conferences that I attend and other trustees attend over the year, and she's always there, fully participating and picking up a lot of good information. We have a plaque for you in recognition of your service, and we wish you well at Yale University.
Thank you so much.
And the doctors are here.
Is there anything you'd like to say, Nune?
So I want to just give a very warm thank you to the board for being so kind, so welcoming during this whole process. It is very tough going from student to student trustee, and I think that my transition would not have been possible without trustee Wa specifically. You have been my mentor on the board. I know if I had any questions, I could have went, I could have gone to you without any doubt in my mind, and just as a whole board, just been so kind and welcoming and always made me feel comfortable, always encouraged me to speak my mind, and that's just something I would like to encourage the new trustee to do as well. Just be aware of all these people out here are here, and they have your best interest in mind, are always looking to help you in any way you need to further represent the students and just grow as an individual yourself. So one last thank you to everyone, specifically trustee Wa. It's been so great to meet Dr. Grippian as well, and thank you.
Thank you, trustee Grippian. Our second recognition is for our women's badminton team. Our team has earned their first state championship last month. In a final round that served as a rematch of last year's championship game, the Lady Lancers beat Fresno City College 11-10 to complete their season undefeated. This is PCC's second state team title for a women's team following the 2009 Women's Basketball Championship. On behalf of all PCC's faculty, staff, and administration, the college offers huge congratulations to coach Jen Ho and the members of the championship team. Go Lancers! Will the coach, the dean, and the players please come forward?
Would our coach and team captain like to make a few remarks?
Well, good evening. First of all, thank you for being here, and of course, I want to thank you, Dr. Grippian and our dean, Deon Miller, for the support. I'm just super proud of the girls. This is our third season of undefeated at the conference, and this is our first state champion. So our next year, well, last year, we had the double state champion and the single before that, so I'll go next year, we're going to get all three at one time. And I'm very super proud of the girls. There's two of students are graduating, and the rest of them will return, so we have a huge chance. Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Grippian.
This is an international, this is an international team, more or less, right, Jen? You want to introduce the players?
First, my assistant coach, Johnny Yang. My assistant coach, Prilin. Assistant coach, return player, Jennifer DeGardo. Melanie Phung. Natalie Young. Yan Lu. Annie Lee. Melanie, no, Alme Diaz, I'm sorry. I'll blank for a second. Yuna, I mean, that's Andrea, Andrea. They all look alike, don't they? They all have long hair, so I will forget for a second, I'm sorry. All right, that's Andrea. Pinky, raise your hand. Queen, raise your hand. And that's Yuna. Amy and Janine.
Well, our third recognition is, we also joined tonight by Vivian Chan, Mabel Duncan, and representatives of the Parent Teacher Student Association, who are here to make an announcement related to our Lancer pantry. Since it opened before the holiday season last year, the Lancer pantry has already established itself as an important resource for students and families that are experiencing food insecurity. More than 1,300 students have used its services since January alone. That's a major accomplishment. I also wanted to highlight the work of our PTE organization, one of the few at community colleges around the country, and the outstanding support it offers to our students and our campus. And now it's my honor to introduce Ms. Chan, who will tell us the purpose of this visit tonight.
Yes, sir. Can I have all my buddies up here? All the girlfriends? All right, can you all come up here? Alex, that's two minutes or less, so I'm making it real brief and make it worthwhile. We are here actually doing something really amazing, is to really work with the college in a more collaborative effort. One of the things we think the pantry need is a refrigerator, because we all need a well-balanced diet, so only dried food is not going to cut it, and healthy lifestyle is what PTA really believe and promote. So with that, we donated the commercial gray refrigerator, not your Best Buy, okay? And it's a $3,000 check we are presenting tonight, and this is just the beginning of our involvement on the campus. One of the things that I talked to the student life dean, Kamani, and say, we wanted to make it really a healthy lifestyle for all students on PCC. And I can just put you guys a little bit ahead, is we decided to probably going to come up with a really fun way of bringing the community together for a celebrity cook off. Are you ready for that? So you wanted to join us, it's only $9, everybody can be a PTE member, so I'm going to put a plaque here, and we welcome everybody to help us. Everything we do, we are doing it for the Lancer, and I have two children graduate from PCC, so I am in it for the lifetime. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so who gets the check? Okay. Okay, that's what I said. Dr. Grippian said normally this is a small amount to be recognized. No, 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 but I want to give him the hope. I said, next time we'll add another zero. And I am determined along, I'm not promising, we are determined to make it fun, so please join us, so we can make that one more zero happen, okay? Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, sir. So you want to do this? Okay. All right. Photo op, please, okay. I am all about social media here.
Agenda item C6, trustee Osterling, are there any public comment items, cards for items not on the agenda?
Yes, we have three comment cards for non-agenda items, which we'll address now, and we also have one for item H2, and that speaker will address when that agenda item, we'll ask that person to come up and speak when that agenda comes up. So our first non-agenda item speaker for tonight is Mr. Martin Enriquez.
Honorable trustees and assembled persons, good evening. I'm going to read the First Amendment to the United States Constitution, the first of the 10th of the 12th of the Bill of Rights that were passed. Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the people, or the right of the people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. A few months ago, there was a discussion on the First Amendment. That dialogue should continue. The First Amendment is a good constitutional principle. There is no question that the First Amendment is the bedrock foundation of our democracy. I believe in civility. I believe in academic freedom. I believe in that this institution is a marketplace for the exchange of ideas. I believe in the American republic. I believe in our republican form of representative government, and all that is good and wonderful in this world. And we are part of the governance, whether officially or unofficially, we partake of it, and I wish more individuals would, but sometimes it seems like the First Amendment is overlooked, but I'm glad that you are enforcing it and that we continue this dialogue. In the words of John Wayne, adios.
Thank you, Mr. Enriquez. And I forgot to mention this prior to starting the speakers, you'll have three minutes, and I will give you a 30-second warning. Our next speaker is Corinthian Bates. We'll hold off starting the clock. Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if I have enough for everybody. My apologies. Yes, sir. Sorry, Bert.
Hello, Ner. It's been a while.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started now.
Okay. The packet represents management disciplinary actions against me when I complain or want some unhealthy condition in the workplace, or if I've been or did not verbally say hi to a superior. They contain mischaracterization of my statements and actions, making me seem to be disruptive individual. I simply come to work to do my job, but I do speak up when I see something is not right or fair, and for that, I feel I am being targeted. My complaints about unhealthy work conditions remain unattended. These targets of my character are coming from management and is spreading to coworkers to haven't even been told that if I spoke about this issue here. My superiors are saying that there's going to be problems. If you look at the last page on the thing, this is, I returned last week from work, from being removed from the college, and I ended up with this in my work box, and I'm finding, and it says fired, big mouth. I unprecedentedly, continuously, like this morning, being told that I'm not allowed to go around and talk to other coworkers when they're working. Well, if it's my break and I want to go speak to another coworker, as long as I'm not disrupting their workspace, and no one has ever complained that I've ever disrupted my coworkers, and why am I being disrespected in these manners? And I'm requesting that the board give me a fair trial on this. I feel like the management or who's involved with this is being the judge, jury, and persecution in regard to giving me a fair hearing, and that's all I request, and I thank you very much for your time, and please, this really needs to be investigated as far as facility goes and the rest of my employee safety concerns goes, and myself. I would like to go home to my family every day, happy, not sad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Our next speaker is Denise Bates.
Hi, thank you for taking the time to listen to us. I was just coming in supportive of my husband and the characterizations that he's getting from work, from management. I, as a clinical supervisor in a hospital, can't understand the negative impact that management is having on its workers and reprimanding them in such a fashion to mischaracterize their, their character and how they really want the best for their working conditions, cleanliness of the college, and it's stressful to see him come home feeling persecuted in this manner, and I just hope that time is taken to give somebody, an arbitrator, fair time to investigate, get the true stories of what happened in the incidences so that things can be settled, he can come home not. to mischaracterize their character and how they really want the best for their working conditions, cleanliness of the college. And it's stressful to see him come home feeling persecuted in this manner. And I just hope that time is taken to give somebody, an arbitrator, fair time to investigate, get the true stories of what happened in the incidences so that things can be settled, he can come home not feeling so stressed going to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. No further non-agenda items.
Thank you.
President Salvage?
Yes.
I would like to make one acknowledgement. So I know Dean Olmer is here, I had a chance to attend her reception. But, you know, I just want to thank her for all the years. This is the last board meeting she will have here, and I just wanted to thank her for all of her years of service. It was clear from the people who, from her division, how much they respected her and how much she'll be missed in that division. So thank you, Dean Olmer.
Thank you. Item C seven, approval of minutes, regular business meeting, May 17th.
Moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's see. Student trustee, you were not present, so you will have to abstain. All those in favor? Passes? Passes five zero two with the student trustee abstaining.
Also trustee Hillsman abstaining.
Yeah, you have six six two. Yeah, trustee Hillsman abstaining, trustee fellow absent. Consent items, students. Do I have a motion or are there any items on this part of the agenda which trustees would like put on the action part?
Second.
All in favor? Excuse me, student trustee. This is consent item D.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Trustees? Passes six zero one, trustee fellow absent, student trustee concurring. Consent items E, instruction. Are there any items on this part of the agenda which trustees would like moved for individual discussion?
Moved to approve.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Student trustee, vote. Thank you. Trustees? Passes six zero one, trustee fellow absent, student trustee voting to. Concur. Consent items F, business. Do any trustees want to move any of these items onto the agenda for individual discussion?
I have some additional questions on F four.
Okay, we'll move that separate then. That's F four. Any other requests to move off of the consent calendar? Okay, student trustee.
Oops.
Thank you. Trustees? Passes six zero one, trustee fellow absent, student trustee voting to confirm. Item G, consent items. This is personnel, the student trustee will not be voting on this. Are there any items on this consent item section which trustees would like discussed individually? Oh, excuse me. Yeah, okay, okay, all of them, right. Do I have a motion for consent items G?
Move approved.
Second.
All in favor, trustees? Passes six zero one with trustee fellow absent. Now we will take item F four individually. Item F four, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Trustee Wa.
Yeah, so, you know, looking over all of the additional information from the college on the rental fees, I, you know, I understand the need to recover costs. But I guess there are lots of really good questions, I think, that came from our fellow trustees. So I liked the charts and the comparisons of what others are doing. But I find that what was, what I found was most relevant were the comparison of our neighboring colleges. Because I think what we are doing is, we're a resource in our region for our constituents. So I don't find that rental costs from Santa Monica or Orange County necessarily are as relevant to us as maybe our neighboring colleges at San Fat. So when I think about that and I looked at the comparison, there are a lot of blanks in our neighboring colleges. So I don't know if that means that they're not charging fees. Go ahead, Dr. Verdi.
We do have the answer to that, Dr. Stordi.
All the information provided is information that was available to us. Some of the colleges do not publicize what their rates are, so we found it difficult to obtain those rates.
I see. So, and the other thing, I do think that there was a comment that, and so by percentage of increase, some were quite high. And so one of the things I think about, because I also get a little bit of feedback from constituents, that maybe they don't see the college, our facilities, as being a resource to them. They don't really know that it's, that as a community, they could come here. And maybe the expense, and I don't know if the expense would be prohibited. So that was one of the reasons I asked the question, what has been our revenue? And I guess maybe what I should have done is asked the follow-up, you know, how many requests do we actually get? Because then the other question on my mind would be, if we're getting not a lot of requests, I mean, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of revenue coming in on this. Would that then be a barrier for, and would we have even fewer requests coming from the community? And so when we think about outreach to the communities, I think, you know, we spend a lot of money advertising and inviting community to come in and to be part of the college. And if we set up barriers that make them feel like it's not a resource to them, then I worry a little bit about that. And I think that's a cost to us in terms of goodwill and community outreach. So I worry about the proposal a little bit with having, not having enough information about what that impact would be.
Really, what the intention is, is to move toward a model where the fees that we charge are both for, two sets of fees. One for nonprofits, which are significantly lower, and then two for profit organizations. And as an example, the model that we're going toward is to, one, recoup our costs. We're not trying to make a profit. Recoup our costs for facilities, security, custodial services, things of that nature, utilities. But also to offset the cost for refurbishing or providing maintenance. An example is our field. So our turf repla, the turf cost for our field, we recently did an RFP, and the costs were very significant, in the neighborhood of a million dollars. And if we're not charging enough to the parties that are using the field and actually requiring us to replace it on a more frequent basis, we don't have the resources from our general fund to replace the turf. So I think by charging the appropriate fee, which is, in my opinion, being recommended tonight, we're covering our cost and we're building a sinking fund to replace the facilities that are being used so they are safe. Because currently, with the field as an example, again, it's not safe for us to let outside organizations use it. And they're disappointed that they can't use it. But it's really safety concerns, because the turf is ripped in several places. We've had injuries on the turf, and we don't have the resources to replace the field as often as it should. It probably should have been replaced about three years ago. But the significant cost, we just don't have the funds to cover it. But if we charge the appropriate amount for organizations that use it and different levels at profit and nonprofit, then we have a vehicle where we can replace the field when it's needed.
And so I understand the concern about the field, that makes sense to me. About, like, for example, you know, if we look at things like the rental of Sexon Hall or Preveling Lounge or even Circadian, how many requests do we actually get? I mean, what are the requests that come in for usage of our facilities? I mean, are we looking at 10? Are we looking at 100?
I'm going to have to defer that to Joe Simonashe and Tanisha Bailey, who are both here tonight. They'll have information on the requests.
Good evening. Joe Simonashe with Business Services, Tanisha Bailey, who's the supervisor of civic use. Specifically, we don't have the numbers. But as an example, in 2015, we had 65 civic events that were rented here on the, at the facility. Overall, there are probably, I would say, 100 or more different activities that take place on campus, both nonprofit and for-profit, in addition to college-sponsored events. So if there is a link between the activity and a academic or instructional activity, those events are sponsored by the college. There is not a cost to the organization that is putting on those activities. So we don't collect funds for every activity that we have. And if I remember correctly, in 2000, fiscal year 2015, 16, we had revenue of about 165,000. So far this year, as of Monday of this week, it's about 180,000. If we charged everybody for the facilities that we have, that number would be, in my opinion, significantly higher. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but.
Yeah, it somewhat does. The other side of that coin would be if it's prohibitive, if it's a barrier to them, the number could be somewhat even lower, or even even. So, I mean, I don't have a problem trying to recover costs. I guess I would have liked better information on how many requests are we receiving for these facilities? How many are profit versus nonprofit? And how many are we waiving the fees? And I think that gives us a better idea of what, how the community sees us as a resource and whether or not they will continue to see us as a resource or whether or not they will see this as a barrier to coming to the college.
So we can actually start to collect that information, put it into a report format. This is an activity that we plan on bringing back to the board every year if there's an adjustment in the rental fees. So next year, we can definitely have that information.
So that, I think that would be really helpful, because I do think it's something we should really watch and monitor. Because I think our goal should be that the community sees us as being someplace they want, they can come to, and that we're a resource to them.
Trustee Brown.
Yeah, I'd like to echo a little bit of what trustee Wa said. I would, when I read the information, it didn't seem as though it was that much, you know, money. But I know that one of the things that the community members has always told me, especially for the last four or five years, was that they did not see PCC as a place where they could come and have activities for the youth in particular. But they have, they would have to contact me, and then I'd have to intervene for them to be able to get a deal or accommodation. So I would like to probably see that I, we do need to charge when feasible. But being viewed as a moneymaker versus trying to embrace the community, the more people come to PCC, the more they fall in love with PCC. So we don't want that to be a barrier. We want to be fair to our community members and do as much as we can as a college to encourage especially underserved population, Northwest Pasadena and other areas that need venues to be able to educate some of their students. And so it's something that I know it may be needed to do, but I think we need to use some caution.
Trustee Ostrilene.
I concur with trustee Wa and trustee Brown. I think we are an important resource and for, particularly for not-for-profit groups that are also serving the community interest. We should try to be a resource. We have a wonderful facility here, and we do want to try to recover our costs. But I think we need to be approachable to the community.
Well, I suggest that we table this item and that we collect all the information that we have heard from the trustees right now, that is, the number of profit, nonprofit groups that use it and what we use them for, and how we can be a better resource to the community. And then we will, at that point, we'll review the whole document, the data, and then if we have to bring it back, we'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Well, without objection, then we will table this item.
We need a motion and a second for tabling.
Move to table.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table this item. Student trustee? Trustees? Motion to table passes six zero one, trustee fellow absent, student trustee voting in favor. Action items, public hearing and adoption of fiscal year 2017, 2018 tentative budget. We open the hearing, are there any public comments on this item?
No.
Hearing is closed. Dr. Verdi, the staff report?
I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent, Vice President for Business and Administrative Services, to give us a preview of the tentative budget.
Good evening. When I, when the meeting first started, I saw the full audience. I thought they were here for the tentative budget. But I'm pleased to share the tentative budget with you. The presentation tonight will begin with an overview of the state budget, and then we'll move into the PCC budget. So overall, the state of California, the budget for education is strong based on the May revise that was issued by the governor's office on May 11th. For community colleges specifically, there's a 1% increase for access. System-wide, that's $57.8 million for PCC. That amounts to 240 additional FTS, or $1.2 million. There's also a large general operating allocation of $186.3 million. And that's unrestricted general fund dollars. And coming to PCC will be $3.6 million. And while it's unrestricted general fund dollars, language is coming from Sacramento that the intent is to use this fund, these funds for cost escalations for items such as PERS and STIRS increases. Included in the budget is also COLA, 1.56% for PCC, that amounts to $2 million. And just a little caution about the COLA. We've seen COLA the past several years in the January budget release, the May revise. And by the time the budget is actually signed into law, the COLA has been taken out. So while it's good news it's in the May revise, I'm a little cautious whether or not that'll remain in the final budget that's signed into law. There's also some one-time funding included in the budget. New program, Guided Pathways, $150 million. The amount that will come to PCC has not been determined yet. I'm still waiting for trailer bill language related to that. But I anticipate anywhere from 1% to 2% will come our direction. So $135 million for scheduled maintenance instructional equipment. It's a large amount, but the problem is, most of it is coming in 2018, 19, not in 2017, 18. So I anticipate we'll receive about $200,000 for 17, 18. And that's a significant decrease from the amount we received this year, which is currently in the neighborhood of $3 million. Proposition 39, system-wide, $46 million. PCC will receive about $800,000 of that. And it's important to note that next year, 2017, 18, will be the final funding year for that program. The $800,000 will have three years to expand on energy-efficient projects. A few words of caution and concern related to the budget. Our first relate to economic and political uncertainties. Economic uncertainties, California's economy is currently strong. We're in the eighth year of an economic recovery. And the governor and the Department of Finance are both, you know, just providing caution that while we, the economy is strong, the economic recovery generally lasts five to six years in California. So if we're in the middle of the eighth year, we could be very close to. of the eighth year, we could be very close to a recessionary period. Political uncertainties are related to transitions that are happening at the federal level, and some of those policy changes could impact us here at PCC. STIRS and PERS, you know, we've talked about it before, and it's a huge material area for us at PCC, but it's, we're not alone. It's an issue that's facing all community colleges, all state agencies. And from the table on the slide, you'll see the increases in PERS/STIRS contribution rates that the employer must make for employees. For example, the STIRS is going from 1617, the rate is 12.58%. It's going to 19.1% by the year 2021. PERS, similar, but it's going even higher. It'll be close to 25% by the year 2021. And what that means in dollars is, by the year 2021, we'll have an increase in our annual ongoing expense in the amount of $7 million. That's not a one-time expense, that's an annual ongoing increase. And to put it a different way, between 2016-17 and 2020-21, we're going to incur an additional $18 million of expense as a result of the increases in the PERS/STIRS rates. So it's a huge area for us. And what we're doing at the district to try to strategize to meet those obligations, we've established Fund 69, PERS/STIRS contingency account, where we're using, anytime there's one-time funding coming into the district that we can set aside, we're doing that. And we're projecting by the year 20, the end of 2017-18, we'll have about $5.8 million set aside, which may sound like a large amount, but that's only going to help us get through the year 2021. And still, you know, after that, we still have concerns. But we're monitoring what's happening in Sacramento, funding opportunities, and advocating as much as possible in Sacramento about this issue. Other post-employment benefits, the district has a liability of $31.5 million, and set aside, we have $14 million. So we have a gap, and what we're doing is, we're currently in the process of establishing an irrevocable trust, which will allow us to invest a portion of the money we have set aside for OPEB into higher earning investments, so it will require less from our general fund to meet those obligations. So now we'll transition to the full-time equivalent students. This is a slide that shows a recap of where we've been in the past, from 2013-14, where our FTS has been, and where we are currently in 2016-17. And, you know, I just want to say that we've done an extraordinary well job at either meeting our state targets or exceeding our targets. So our faculty and staff have done an excellent job in helping grow our FTS. You'll see, we've grown from 2013-14 to 1617, 2,745 FTS each year, or 12.9%. So in the environment with slowing enrollment, where, you know, statewide, there's about 30 to 40 colleges in stabilization, we're meeting our target, serving our students, serving the communities that we're here to serve. And this graph shows a 1% growth, which is 240 FTS available next year. General fund tentative budget, this is a snapshot of the general fund revenues and expenses. And you'll note that it's a balanced budget. The total revenue equals the total expenses. I'm not going to go into detail on each item. I have three slides that follow that will cover assumptions for revenue, expenses, and the transfers. But I just wanted to point out, the total state apportionment is 86% of our budget, $133.8 million. And the next largest revenue item is our non-resident tuition, which represents 6% of our total revenue at $9.3 million. And on the expense side, our salaries and benefits is coming in at 85.5%. So that's our largest expense item. Revenue assumptions, this slide shows a comparison of the projection from 2016-17 to the tentative budget. So these are all the major changes between the two. So our base allocation, we're seeing an additional $3.6 million. Included in this schedule is the COLA enrollment growth, $1.2 million. But the last two items, in total, they're more than $5 million, and they're a reduction in revenue. And they're a reduction in revenue because these are one-time funding sources that we received from the state in 2016-17 that are not included in the budget for 2017-18. So I just wanted to highlight and point out that fact. But in total, our revenue is going up almost $1.8 million, which is very good. On the expenses, the biggest increase for our expenses is total compensation. So total compensation to our employees includes salary increases, health benefits, PERS and STIRS. So this component is going up 2% in our tentative budget, $2.1 million. It does not include, the tentative budget does not include a salary increase, so the salary increase is zero, but the total compensation is still going up 2% as a result of the district's making contributions for pensions on behalf of employees, increases in health costs. There's also a $1.2 million increase for the net increase in faculty positions. We have a 1% increase for general operating expenses, a reduction in transfers out of $2 million. This slide shows a recap of the transfers from the general fund, $3.5 million, and it shows which funds, those funds, those dollars are going into. So pretty self-explanatory, $3.5 million coming out of the general fund, going into Fund 62, our self-insurance fund, 1.4, and so on. This slide shows a recap of all the district's funds. It shows a projected beginning balance, income for next year, expenditures, transfers, and a projected ending balance. And I'd like to call to your attention the bottom line, the total. So the total projected beginning balance we show is $57.5 million, and you'll see the total projected ending balance at $46 million. And I wanted to point that out because some may say, wow, it's going down a lot. But it's going down $11 million on purpose, because if you look at our Measure P fund, Fund 42, has a balance of $6 million at the beginning of the year, and our intent is to fully utilize those dollars in 2017-18, complete all the projects, and expend all the funds. And you'll see similar declines in our capital outlay fund and our scheduled maintenance fund. And that's just because we're completing projects as planned. And that's the final slide. But before I open it up to questions, I wanted to give, I wanted to give thanks to some key participants who helped develop the budget, Hedva Weingart, Lakana Finacy, and Joe Simonetche. And I also wanted to thank the Budget Audit Committee for their oversight and good conversations related to the budget. I think we've had some very positive dialogue that's, you know, helped keeping the college on track. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Dr. Verdi, do you want to mention anything before the trustees?
I would like to thank the team and the leadership of Dr. Storty and the guidance from the Budget and Audit Subcommittee as this budget was being prepared. And as you will notice, our intention in this budget was to show a balanced budget. And we are not doing anything that is, if you want to pad any account or anything like that, we just want to show where the money comes in and where the expenditures are.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank the staff for the work they've been doing on the budget, as chair of the Budget and Audit Committee, along with trustees Osterlein and Martin. You know, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this and putting this into shape in a way that it's, you know, clear and intelligible, and the whole college community and other people and taxpayers understand where we are and what we're facing. The big uncertainties that we were facing several years ago have been kind of resolved. There's been a scheduled increase in the PERS and STIRS contributions, and they're going to be big. The increases are going to be big, but we know what those increases are. We know what those percentage figures are. And it's not likely in the next year or two that we're going to see a dramatic shift in that. The benefits package is something that we're working on pretty hard, and we hope that we're going to have a good outcome there. And last to follow, the voters approved a continuation of a large fund of money that helps fund community colleges as well as K through 12 education. So a lot of things got resolved and cleared up, and we've got a balanced budget this year. It's still going to be a challenge next year, and it's going to be a bigger challenge the year after that. And it's been, as has been mentioned, COLA is an uncertainty. It's in the May revised budget, but it hasn't gotten past the May revised budget for three years. So it may not be there this year. And that's a measure of uncertainty, but I'm really happy the way that things have moved along and the way we're now developing the budget, and particularly doing the multi-year projections in a really, a really professional way. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Martin?
You articulated much of what I was going to say. If you look, we realize we're dealing with a quarter of a billion with a B dollars, and that's a lot of money. And I think the administration and the staff did an exceptional job of putting together materials both tonight and for, in particular, the Budget and Audit Committee that spent a couple hours going through it, multi-year, with the key assumptions on top. In particular, the clarity that we just saw in that last slide between funds, so you can see the totals, you can see the movements. Throughout their presentation, there was a tremendous amount of clarity. There was a tremendous amount of transparency. I think it gave me, as a trustee, an opportunity to think strategically about what we are doing with the key variables going forward in order to make sure that the district will be here in the next decade for the next generation. So they could have easily dumped us with 80 pages of numbers that would have made that extremely difficult, or given us a couple pages of big figures that would be almost meaningless without backup. And instead, I think we got just the absolute perfect blend of significance in numbers to understand really what is going on and what some of the potential risks of the future are. So Dr. Verdi, I'm very thankful to you, to Dr. Storty, to Ms. Weingart, I see, out there, and the whole budget team. You really just did an exceptional job. And the last thing I'll say is, I'm sitting on a committee with two other of the most brilliant number people I've ever been in a room with, and if you can make them happy, you can make anybody happy. So really exceptional job to the team.
Thank you.
Trustee Brown.
Thank you. So actually, I just wanted to say what he said. This was a great report for someone that's a novice like me with, like, perfect. I said, what the heck? Look at this. This is just wonderful. It's a great job.
Excellent. Thank you.
Trustee Osterlein.
Ditto. The kudos to Dr. Verdi and Dr. Storty and all the staff that put this together. It's a balanced budget in difficult times, and again, when it's hard to do that. And the clarity of presentation, distilling down all of that volume of information into something that we could understand, was exceptionally well done. And I just wanted to ask you to comment on two items unrelated. One, if you can comment on the FTES slide, what we've experienced, and then just comment on that in the context of what some of our peer community colleges are experiencing in their FTES. And then lastly, if you could comment on the funds transfers in one of your later slides, let me get to it, pardon me, the transfer slide, and specifically Fund 69 for PERS and STIRS relative to what you presented earlier on how those numbers are going to increase over time.
FTES. Enrollment has been softening in the state, I would say, the past three years. It's been in different regions of our state. Portions of San Diego have experienced softening, Northern California also. But PCC has really held its own, as this table showed, because we're seeing growth each year, and the growth is strategic. You know, how funding from the state works is, we can't provide unlimited FTS. The state tells us how many FTS we can generate. And what we're doing is, we're hitting that target strategically, offering classes that our students need and our communities desire. And what we're doing is meeting our target in a time when enrollment's softening. In the past year, I would say, more and more districts are going into stabilization. I know of several districts in our immediate area that have recently gone into stabilization within the last year, and their enrollment is down 2%, 3% year-over-year comparison. So it's soft here, but Terry and his team has done an excellent job this year in offering classes that attract students. And we look at the student population that we serve. It's not only from our district. We're drawing students from outside based on, you know, the faculty that we have, our reputation. So it's not a guarantee, but this graph just shows the excellent work that we've done, and in an environment with a softening enrollment. And when we go to the transfer slide, you'll see $3.5 million coming out of the general fund, and where we're transferring those monies to. Fund 69 is our contingency fund for PERS/STIRS liability. In 2017-18, the tentative budget includes a transfer to that fund of almost $500,000, which will bring the total to about $5.8 million at the end of that year. And what those funds will be used for is, when PERS/STIRS rates are increased in future years, this fund will transfer money to the general fund to help offset those increases, so we're not operating in a deficit in the general fund. So we'll be transferring money from that fund to the general fund. So whenever we receive one-time funding, this year, what we did is, we transferred the monies into Fund 69. And that's a strategy that'll help us for a few years until hopefully there's a solution at the state level. Because again, it's not only PCC that's facing this concern. It's every state agency in California that has employees has a similar issue. Cities, UCs, Cal States, all the K-12s have the same issue. So something has to give. The state is providing the increase for the general allocation this year, which will receive $3.6 million. And they are saying that those funds should really be earmarked for STIRS and PERS increases. And, you know, that's some relief, but nowhere near does it cover the total increase that we will incur.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? I've got a question on OPEB. The current unfunded liability is about how much, 30...
31.5 million.
31.5. And if we have X million dollars in it, it means the real, so to speak, real net unfunded liability is the 31, et cetera, minus what we have in that fund.
About 17 million.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Booked approved.
On second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the tentative budget. Student trustee? Trustees? Motion passes 601. Trustee fellow absent, student trustee voting in the affirmative. Item H2 approved.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes. Yes, public comment on the EEO plan.
So we're moving on to agenda item H2 now, correct?
Yeah.
So yes, we have one speaker for public comment on agenda item H2, and that is Stella Merga. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Good evening. Good job. My name is Stella Merga. I'm a member of PCC's president's... I'm a member of PCC's Presidents, President's Latino Advisory Committee, on which I have served for a number of years now. I'm also the Executive Director of the Adelante Youth Alliance, a Pasadena-based nonprofit organization. Our focus is preparing youth for college and careers, and one way we do that is through our two college and career conferences, the Adelante Mujeres Latina Conference and the Adelante Young Men Conference, produced each year and held here at PCC. We rent the facilities at the nonprofit rate, and for that, we are grateful. Both conferences serve over 4,000 middle and high school students each year. Our conferences have grown so much because of the successful Latino and Latina professionals who volunteer as workshop presenters, sharing their college and career journeys with the students. Having these professionals who look like our students and have similar cultural and life experiences has been the key to the conference's success. Presenters are able to relate to the students and encourage them to advance academically and professionally. So, I'm here tonight to hear how you plan to increase the number of Latino faculty here at PCC. After so many years of working to recruit students for PCC, I'm happy to learn that the number of Latino students has increased to 51% of the overall student population. However, in order to recruit more students and retain those students, hiring more Latino faculty is vital. Having teachers who more accurately reflect the population of their classrooms results in a number of benefits to students and the school community, including culturally-based instruction and higher student expectations. These teachers can also serve in the role of cultural mediators and advocates, help to counter negative stereotypes, strengthening PCC's human capital. Research shows that when students fail to see minority adults in professional positions and instead see them overrepresented in the ranks of non-professional workers, they implicitly learn that people of color are not suited to hold positions of authority in society. This unspoken message reinforces existing social inequalities and clashes with the promise of equality in the United States. Because many students of color come from economically impoverished backgrounds and have limited access in their communities to successful professionals who are racially and ethnically similar to them, exposure to teachers of color gives them hope that they too can aspire to hold responsible positions as adults, which motivates them to strive for academic and social success. The presence of teachers of color decreases the sense of alienation that students of color from both poor and affluent backgrounds often experience in schools. The literature documents the need for teachers of color as role models for all students, but especially for students of color. Teachers of color can bolster the sense of worth for students of color, motivate them to strive for academic success, and encourage them to envision professional careers for themselves. The notion that people of color are well-suited to teach students of color is not only consistent with theories of learning, but also receives support from a large body of qualitative research that illustrates numerous ways in which competent teachers of color draw on the cultural backgrounds of students of color to facilitate their learning. Moreover, teachers who can relate to their students' cultural background should be less likely to hold biased, subjective views of their academic abilities. For the sake, for the sake of student success and the success of PCC, I urge you to take the steps necessary to hire more Latino faculty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Verdi, you have a staff presentation?
Yes, I'm going to ask Vice President Dr. Lisa Norman to present the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan. And I do believe you are going to present also the nine multiple model at the same time, or the two different presentations?
There are two different presentations. Thank you, Board of Trustees, and, oh, there, thank you. And, yes, the audience left, but there are still a few people left. So, let me begin by starting with the purpose and structure of the EEO plan, as well as leading into the nine multiple methods. To begin, the, the EEO plan actually is grounded in the Civil Rights Act. It goes that far back to 1964, wherein the federal legislation came down, and then states were, of course, charged with making sure that implementation of the laws, the procedures, ensuring that there was not adverse impact to historically underrepresented groups, was going to be appropriately addressed. There were several pieces of legislation that the states implemented. One that was important to California was Proposition 209. It, it helped guide us in terms of what is allowable, what is not allowable, in terms of how we are not looking at quotas, for example, in terms of our hiring practices, but how we need to look at monitored groups, those groups who've been historically underrepresented, how we need to go about doing recruitment, and ensuring that, in some ways, we are making actions and efforts to move the needle, particularly for those groups in the workforce. So, what is relevant to, to the community college sector in specific is the California Code of Regulations under Title V. This is where you will find a lot of the legislation, as well as in the Education Code, in terms of how community colleges are required to implement, looking at our workforce, our recruitment efforts, and the like. Now, what had happened over the last several years, leading up to about 2015, was that community colleges were not putting in place their EEO plans, their Equal Employment Opportunity Plans. In fact, up to 2015, only about 55% of all community colleges had even submitted an EEO plan to the state, which was a requirement to demonstrate that we had, in fact, been working on these efforts, and these were our action-oriented efforts and our analysis in terms of how we've been making a difference and showing growth and progress. Part of that was the funding, or the lack thereof. So, for example, Pasadena, I believe, received approximately $9,000 in terms of helping us with these efforts. Some colleges received far less than that. So, there really was no incentive for a lot of colleges who felt that perhaps if I don't submit my plan, the penalty is very slight. So, that emphasis changed. The state really felt that it was important that we continue to focus on these efforts. And so, last year, under the guidance of the State Chancellor's Office, they implemented a new method called the nine multiple methods. And those methods actually provided a lot more funding, and it actually became kind of the carrot and the stick, that you do need to submit your plans. If you don't submit your plans on time, there is a penalty that's incurred, but if you do submit your plans, there is additional funding. Last year, the funding that came forward was in the amount of about $60,000 for every district that submitted their plan. Obviously, a lot more sufficient than 9,000, so that community colleges could implement and enforce different actions and measures to help address diversity in the workforce. So, from 2015 to the present, the growth has been tremendous. The last measure was about 86% of all community college districts had put forward their EEO plan. Now, part of that plan, and the charge for that, again, came under the nine multiple methods, and I'll walk through that very quickly. The nine multiple methods are broken into three parts. There's pre-hiring, hiring, and then post-hiring. The pre-hiring emphasis is really on our recruitment efforts. What are we doing to recruit those areas, those particular groups that are considered monitored groups, in accordance to our analysis? The hiring part of that is, what are we doing as we move through the interview phase of the process? Are we, are we training our hiring committees? How are we going about ensuring that our hiring practices are addressing, looking towards hiring a more diverse workforce? And then finally, we have post-hiring, which really emphasizes a lot more professional development activities. So, that was really kind of in a nutshell, the nine multiple methods, but there's various different components that are within these nine multiple methods that every district has to follow. So, there are two plans now, essentially, but the intent is that they are supposed to be interrelated with each other. The nine multiple methods really is a bit more action-oriented to show that community colleges are moving forward in their efforts. Now, in terms of the EEO plan, which is a part of multiple method one, that is a requirement, another part of that is the EEOAC, which is the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, that's a requirement, as well as the funding structure that goes along with that. So, under the EEOAC, that's the group that's charged to put together the EEO plan, and that plan addresses the entire analysis, which looks at all the components of the EEO plan. Are we making progress? Do we have appropriate documentation in there in terms of complaints, how they're handled? What are some of our cursory letters that we need to submit to those who do file complaints? And then it moves into the overall analysis, and then finally, it goes to impact measures or remedies to what are we going to do to address those groups that are still considered underrepresented. So, the analysis can include multiple things, and it's important to, to note that the state had intended, under the California Code of Regulations Title V, to provide us with data so that we could apply what's called the 80% rule to underrepresented groups. Unfortunately, the state never provided that information, but in fact, they made it a local decision for us to be able to do that. But you will find reference in Title V that talks about what the State Chancellor's Office will provide, but they have not provided, and we do not believe that they have intent to provide that in the future. Therefore, they have made it a local decision. So, when we were looking at our projected representation in terms of how do we disaggregate our data and look at those groups that are underrepresented at, at the college? So, we, we looked at several different methods. These three are most important to us. Student demographics is something that's new. We didn't look at this in 2013, but we felt that it was relevant in terms of making sure that we were addressing a workforce that was representative of the students we serve. We looked at, which is, you know, that's one of the analyses that we can look at. We also looked at our workforce demographics for each job categories or classifications. That is a requirement, that we have to do at least that part in terms of disaggregating by classifications, job classifications, and then previous demographics of applicants. What you don't see up here that we could have also looked at potentially was the labor market as it relates to the disaggregation of classifications and job categories. So, we didn't look at that one in particular because we did feel that these three measures were a more accurate depiction of our workforce, coupled with the fact that we are required by the state to look at longitudinal data analysis. And we looked at how the analysis was conducted last year, so in order to compare apples to apples, we felt that this level of analysis was a more appropriate method, while at the same time taking into account the fact that we did want to look at our student demographics, albeit we didn't necessarily use them within the analysis itself. So, I'll move to our student demographics, and this is our composition at this point. I won't read what all the percentages are, but you can see kind of roughly, our Hispanic student population is the larger population at the college. We have Asian, white, as well as African-American that are in higher percentages. African-Americans, slightly smaller, we did decrease in that slightly over the past year, but all the other groups, we have seen growth over the past few years. So, we wanted to take that into account as an advisory committee to see how are we addressing our workforce in terms of a representative staff and faculty that we are putting before students. So, with that being said, this is a look at the longitudinal data analysis. So, we did a comparative analysis, and to the left, you see the actual plan that is currently in place, the 14 through 17 plan. The plans are three-year model, three-year plans. However, the EEOAC can choose, it is a local decision, to look at the data on a yearly basis if needed, and change that data or have it be more reflective as things change over time. That data, if we do change it, does need to be provided to the state to indicate that we have made changes. If not, what you're looking at is a three-year analysis. So, what you see before you is, in fact, a three-year analysis. This is looking at previous demographics, and what I mean by previous is, we are not capturing data in terms of our hiring, our hires on an ongoing basis. At some point, you have to stop, and you have to capture the data and say, "Okay, this is who we've hired at this point, and now we need to start doing our analysis," and we're looking at a comparative to 2013. One of the encouragements that we received from the state after having been in contact with them on several occasions, that they thought it would be a good idea if we could further disaggregate the data from what would be significantly underrepresented to what is underrepresented. And so, you will see the color coding to match that. So, with the orange, I think it's, it's a little bit more evident that those particular groups, when you look at the head count and you see the percentage that relates to some of those groups, that they are falling in the significantly underrepresented population. And then when you see, which is between 41 to 79%, and then when you see the green color codes, that means that they are underrepresented, and I'll explain that in just a moment. The red bolded indicates that we have made growth from 2013 to the present. One caution to be mindful of is the fact that when you have smaller populations that are in a certain classification, the movement one way or another, adding or taking away, makes a significant, significant difference. So, it's really, you know, kind of telling where you see a 5% could be maybe closer to, to being, you know, underrepresented versus significantly underrepresented if that total population is small, okay? So, in terms of how the analysis has been applied, is, we're looking at the 80% rule, which is something that is determined, or has been established, rather, by the EEO, EEOC, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. And that particular analysis really is based on a selection process, and that selection process is looking at applicants that are coming in, looking at the number of different groups by race and ethnicity that are applying, applying a formula to that, and then seeing who is the highest-selected group in that particular area. And then you take that highest-selected group, and you divide to see where all the other groups have fallen, to see if they are 80% or less in terms of selection. That is the analysis. Now, unique to these plans are the fact that we are, and did, in fact, start with an already selected group. So, we weren't starting from the ground up, we were starting with a population that already existed. So, that analysis is a bit more unique in terms of applying it, of course, to an already selected population versus one that's walking in the door, and you're creating, you know, this analysis from beginning to end. This analysis was actually utilized, again, similarly in the last analysis, which was part of the reason why we wanted to compare our longitudinal data analysis against that. So, what we discovered is that, again, in the red bolded, when we compared 2013 to 2016, we did see some growth. We saw a lot more growth in the Hispanic population, and we did see some growth in pockets in other areas as well. Our intent, of course, is to continue to move forward, to, to move that needle as much as we can. And so, we are seeing some strides that are being made, but this is a large, a huge undertaking in terms of, you know, looking at our practices, how are we recruiting, and I'll get into some of those impact measures that we, we believe have been making a change. So, I'll move to the next slide here, and again, you'll notice across the top that you see the disaggregation of classifications. That is a requirement of the state. You have to do two things. You have to You have to disaggregate by classification, and then you have to disaggregate by race and ethnicity and gender and disability as well. I don't have disability up here tonight. That is in the EEO plan itself, but this is largely looking at race and ethnicity this evening. But it is important to note that PCC has done well in terms of comparative analysis with gender. We pretty much almost have a 50-50 split in terms of male and female, so we don't see any concerns in that area. Okay. So, moving forward, I'm just going to put all of these up here relatively quickly, and I'll walk through them. The first thing that we've done that's different in terms of our impact measures, we've looked at utilizing a more holistic approach. So, Human Resources has partnered with Student Services, Equity, Diversity Coordinator. We've done a lot of work together in seeing what we can do to have greater impact across campus so that it's not looked at as a siloed approach. Of course, the parts in Human Resources, I will be honest, can be relatively dry, not necessarily fun, because we deal with a lot of the legal issues. And so, one of the things that I learned coming into the campus last year was there was a wonderful training that was provided, that we heard wonderful things about in terms of how we can move our hiring committees forward in understanding case studies, how to assess, looking at diverse candidates, what are appropriate questions to ask, what are the kinds of questions to ask? And so, we moved forward with working with Student Services and Equity in terms of how do we continue to move this type of training forward, coupled with what HR has to do on the legal end. So, that is in fact, what we did this year. We had such a huge outpour of want to attend this particular training that we conducted four trainings this year, and this is, has been, at least since we've been collecting data, the largest number of employees that we've trained. We trained 260 employees this year, not all of which who sat on a hiring committee, but obviously, were enthusiastic to participate in this new training. We are looking, if we get the fundings, of course, which is contingent upon the approval of the plan, is once you get the funding, we want to be able to utilize some of those dollars to address additional trainings, which are already in the works right now. We're developing, along with the trainer who helped us this past year, developing what's called a Level Two training. And that training is going to be a bit more about role-playing, providing the hiring committees with opportunities to have difficult conversations, what do they do when they're in those situations? So, that curriculum is pretty much done. We are trying to finalize that. We also are looking at doing training specific for chairs, who are our EEO reps. And so, how can they help facilitate? So, they are going to have their own distinct trainings as well. We have a diversity and equity website. Again, that's part of our partnership with Student Services. The website is almost complete. It is going to have a myriad of different activities, events, all the advisory committee links will be there. We're trying to see how we can add components of what's happening in the community, what's happening at PCC, what is some literature that would be useful for those who are trying to educate themselves on equity and diversity, any relevant articles. So, we're looking at a number of different things to demonstrate that we are a diverse campus, and this is important to us. We're also analyzing our interview procedures, and part of that is now done through a survey that we are, we have created and put forward that's given to all interview committees at the close of interviews. Personally, I am meeting with some of those interview committees and getting feedback from them directly as to what's working, what's not working well, so that we can take that data and be able to see what we can do to improve our practices. Job description reviews, we have revamped our job descriptions. Part of that is we are looking at how are we addressing diversity as one of the components in our job descriptions. We're also looking at entrance and exit interviews. Now, entrance interviews, I just want to touch on very briefly, because I think this is an area that doesn't necessarily get always the recognition it deserves. I will speak candidly that as an African American female, one of the things that's important to me, or was important to me upon looking for a position, was going to the website and seeing what kind of diversity existed at that campus. And I wanted to see evidence that there was diversity. That was important to me as an African American female. You know, what is this campus about? What is this college about? And so, and for a number of, of course, personal reasons, I wanted to make sure that I could play a part in a campus that was diverse. And so, I was very excited to see that PCC was about diversity. And so, I could see that in the evidence that was on the website. So, these are things that are important for us to ask, not just when employees are separating from the district, but what's encouraging them to come? Had I not seen diversity, more than likely, I probably wouldn't have applied. So, these are things that we have to capture, to figure out what are we doing well and what's encouraging those who are more diverse to want to apply to the campus, to the college. Feedback surveys, we're also engaging, we have actually a survey monkey out right now to see, now that we're starting to close down our recruitment process, who has been instituting some of the practices from the trainings that we've put forward this year, and seeing if they've made a difference and what are some best practices from that. And then finally, we are working next year to create brochures and pamphlets that we can distribute that are specific to what PCC is about and the importance of diversity and inclusion on our college campus. So, those are some of the efforts that we're currently doing and then looking forward to doing in the future. And on that note, I just want to end by saying that this year, and I take no credit for this, because I wasn't here at the time, but the multiple methods, six, seven, and, sorry, seven, eight, and nine, was recognized by the state chancellor at Pasadena as being one of the best practices and is currently in the Best Practices Handbook on the website in these particular areas, specific to evaluation, ensuring that we were sensitive to diversity, that we're addressing that in our evaluation process. And so, they liked, of course, the model language, which is why Pasadena was recognized for that. So, this is a guide that is used by all community colleges to, as a resource for them as they're working on their plans. So, on that note, thank you, and if you have any questions?
Do you have anything to add, Dr. Verdi, at this point?
I would like to thank Dr. Norman for the work that she has done with her team, also with Charlotte Moore and everybody else in HR for the wonderful work that you have done, presenting this, not only this PowerPoint, but also putting the plan together.
Thank you.
Trustees. Trustee Warren.
Yeah, so, I do want to thank Dr. Verdi and Dr. Norman for their work. I mean, they obviously have made great commitment to diversity on this campus, and it's something that's been a goal for the trustees as we set the goals for the college every year. But I also particularly want to thank you, Dr. Norman, because I think since you have come on as part of the executive cabinet, you've just been very intentional in the goals, and I find you to be very thorough.
Thank you.
Still, I have some questions.
Okay.
Okay. So, I sent this earlier in the questions, and I just really want to encourage, we have three advisories, three ethnic advisories at the college, and I really applaud our administration for doing that. I think we're one of the very few colleges that even has an API advisory. So, most colleges have a Latino and an African American advisory. So, and Dr. Verdi has been very supportive. So, I just really wanted to encourage that we use those advisories, as we heard Ms. Merga talk about this. I think that we can help as community people to help you cast the net and to help you build your pools. I know I get a lot of feedback from the API communities that they aren't aware of the opportunities, or they don't feel like there's opportunities. So, you know, I want to help you, because I know you're working hard on this. Couple of things, and you don't have to really, I don't know that it would be appropriate for you to tell the board, but I hope that one of the things you're looking at is as you're building the training, that you're looking at where those bottlenecks are occurring. So, I know we have three levels of committees, and, you know, first of all, you cast the net, and whether or not we even have a good pool of representative groups, and then where do they get weeded out? And I think that's one way of looking at whether or not the training is working. The second, the other thing I wanted to just ask a little bit about, so I know that we just approved the hiring of Diversity Coordinator, and so, do you see, what do you see as being, how that position will move the needle other than training? I mean, will they be sitting in on the interviews? Will they be giving feedback? I mean, are they empowered to really make changes back to administration?
Yes, that particular position is not a position situated in HR. I think that position is within Student Services. So, Dr. Oliva might be a better person to address that.
Yes, at this point, we've partnered with Human Resources to bring in Dr. Chris Cullen to conduct cultural competence training. Now, a cultural competence can exist in any individual regardless of background, and as Dr. Norman mentioned, 268 people were so interested in learning these skills, and that's why they participated in the EEO trainings. What we will continue to do is further develop how to ensure that we utilize culturally relevant pedagogy and curriculum inside the classroom, and that we create warm and caring environments for our students outside the classroom.
And I know, Dr. Oliva, you're familiar with the studies that were done on sort of unrecognized biases and sort of the tests that are done, and President Nguyen has been really helpful in getting that out through the chancellor's office. So, I hope that we use some of those tools to really identify things that we may not even recognize as being biases.
Absolutely.
Trustee Brown.
So, first of all, congratulations, and a very, an excellent report, even I could figure it out. I mean, I'm saying this is like so clear. But anyhow, I know that we had a lot, a lot of questions and what have you, but with my background as a Black Latina, first let me say this. I had the opportunity of attending the Plaque scholarships and the, I think it was the Talent Search, and a few of the, you know, the graduating class and what have you, and the stories, the stories that these students shared as they received their scholarships, and the folks that they thank for helping them cross that line brought me back lots of memories. It is good to have folks that takes that little extra time to guide you and push you in the right direction, but that's just for free. I was looking at the graphs that you presented and the comparisons from 2013 into 2016, and I was looking at the workforce distribution, and I could see where, you know, we have people that would have problems because we're used to the status quo, and that's just who we are, we're humans. You know, we don't want changes, and we cannot, that's just life. Unfortunately, things do change. And when I look at the 51% of our students are Latinos, I look at the Asian pie as well, 24% of our students, we cannot just say that we believe in diversity and don't want to, or skeptic, or whatever it is that, to not want to embrace, to do what we need to do. That's really the bottom line, to do what we need to do. We have excellent staff at PCC. We're known for our wonderful staff. But you know, we can also find some wonderful staff of color if we give them a chance, if we follow the process, and I know there were discussions about the methodology. I didn't have a problem understanding the 80% rule. So, I am very happy to see and hope that we would do the right thing for our students, for our college, not just talk the talk, but we need to walk the walk. So, that's my two things.
Trustee Hilsman.
Yes, I wanted to thank you, Dr. Norman, for all your hard work on this. You know, when I was elected after a kind of a hard-fought campaign, and I walked over a couple of days afterwards on the campus, and I looked at the faces of our students, and I was so proud of the diversity that we represent. I mean, this was something that was really moving for me as a white guy, you know, to see the opportunities that we're presenting to generation after generation of students as our country changes. And I also wanted to recognize Dr. Verdi for his leadership and the emphasis that he's placed on the importance of diversity in the classroom and in hiring. I mean, I've really, I've been impressed by what he represents, I think, for the future of the college and our country. So, I wanted to thank you, Dr. Verdi, for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
So, do we make a motion?
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that this report be accepted.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? No, excuse me. Student trustee? Trustees? Thank you. Passes 601. Tony Fellow is absent, and student trustee voting in favor. Thank you. Equal Employment Opportunity Multiple Method Model.
Both are approved.
Second. All in, excuse me, student trustee?
Yes.
All in favor? Passes 601. Tony Fellow absent, student trustee concurring. Approval additions and deletions and modifications to the client, excuse me, credit and non-credit curriculum.
Both are approved.
That was, that's it?
Second.
I was going to say that we recommend that you approve it.
We'll do that.
I anticipated your recommendation.
Any discussion? Student trustee? Trustees? Passes 60...
I'm, whoops, I'm going to abstain on this one.
Okay. Passes 602.
There you go.
Passes 602 with trustee Martin abstaining, trustee Fellow absent, and student trustee voting in favor. Information items.
I know, we see that.
Number five. Oh, excuse me. Approved memorandum of understanding between Pasadena Area Community College District and the Pasadena City College Faculty Association, bargaining and reopening of the calendar.
We recommend that the board approves this MOU between the college and, the district rather, and the faculty association about the calendar, specifically about the inclusion of the Flex Day on March 15, 2018, and the date of August 25, 2017, as not being a mandatory instructional day.
Both are approved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Student trustee? Trustees? Passes 601. Trustee Fellow absent, student trustee voting in favor. Information items.
The first...
2017.
Yep. It's the 2017 IEPI Indicator Goals Framework, and Ms. Crystal Colros, our Executive Director for Research and Planning, will give a brief presentation on that.
Did you say a brief presentation?
We hope.
I'm not presentation. I'm trying. Okay, so, welcome to the IEPI indicators. I'm just going to give you a little background on where these came from and how we did it this year. So, this legislation was enacted in 2014. It was a new system of indicators that they wanted us to use to basically... wanted us to use to basically start talking about data, that's what they wanted to do. The Board of Governors adopted it, the first year we did it was actually back in 2015, but there was very few, you probably never saw them, they just went right by you, and then 2016, they gave us more, and then, of course, this year, they gave us even more indicators to look at. So, they notify us in about March that we have to submit in June, they say, here's your historical data, but, oh, we're not going to give you that till April because we don't have it ready, so it takes a little time to get it all done. And this year, I think I got it somewhere almost middle to late April, when I finally got all the historical data put together, but that's okay, because everybody was excited about them. So, colleges are required to develop, adopt, and publicly post a goals framework, the goals should be aspirational, but we're not going to be judged on whether we reach those goals or not. I'm not sure what that means. So, it's supposed to be a tool for colleges to start a discussion about where they might have problems or areas where we might be able to improve. That's a bug. Okay, good. All right, now, I wanted to bring this up because in accreditation and standard 1B3, we're required to set institutional set standards, well, some of the IEPI indicators actually overlap with what we're required to set as institutional set standards, so we want to make sure that we align these, so we weren't reporting two different things, so I just wanted to bring that up, because we worked really hard on that, to talk to the accreditation standing committee and planning priorities, so we all were aligning the indicators up. Okay, so, isn't that nice? The IEPI Goals Framework is actually divided into four areas, fiscal viability, fund balance, operating excesses, deficiencies, compliance with federal and state audits, and then, my favorite one is number three, the accreditation status, do you want to be sanctioned or not? Guess what we all choose? And then the last one, which is actually the largest one, are the student performance outcomes. The fiscal viability and the compliance with audits, that's about nine of the indicators, the accreditation status is one, and then there's about 20 that have to do with the student performance outcomes, and they're starred because those are the ones that overlap with the accreditation institutional set standards. So, how we did it this year is budget and resource allocation standing committee, they took care of the fiscal viability and the compliance indicators, they developed the one-year and six-year goals, Dr. Sturdy chairs that committee, and he worked with his committee to come up with those. Planning and priority standing committee, we did the, the student achievement indicators, Dr. Foster, the academic senate president, and I co-chair that committee together, so we worked on that for several months with that group, and then we developed the goals, and then I took them on the road. So, I went to the accreditation standing committee, and I presented to them, I went to the academic senate twice on the 15th, and then last Monday, I went to associated students, and I presented them to them, we discussed the numbers, I talked to the academic deans, I talked to the executive committee, I took it to college council, and earlier today, I was at the classified senate meeting discussing them. So, we did a pretty good round on getting these out there to everybody to do that, what we're supposed to do, which is have a discussion about the numbers. Any questions?
Do you have any further comments, Dr. Verdiyan?
Very much for working with everybody on campus to set those goals.
I tried.
Trustees, any comments, questions?
Yes.
Oh, Trustee Brown, were you first, or is that still on?
I'm sorry.
Okay, Trustee Wa.
I'm ready.
So, thank you, Ms. Colros, so, I do understand that there was a little hesitancy about making goals too lofty, indeed, they are supposed to be aspirational, so, sitting on the chancellor's IEPI task forces, I think that this is great, that, that we have these, these goals. So, as, as a board, I think that one of the things we, we all should look at is, you know, whether or not the cost benefit is commensurate with, actually, whether the costs, I guess, that we're expending is commensurate with the benefit that we're getting. So, if we only move the needle two students over, okay, that's some progress, but, you know, but if we put $100,000 into it, maybe that's not considered the best use of resources, and we should always look at that. So, you know, we have opportunities, I think, on the board to work with the president on upcoming goals, and I hope that that's one of the things that we'll look at, is how we can, maybe it doesn't have to be on paper, but maybe it's something that we look at, that we can work with the president's office, and, because the, the real goal should be whether or not we're creating those successful venues for our students, whether or not they're reaching goals that are really important, and I think that's what we should all be focused on, and not be too worried about whether or not the report card, we're going to get beaten up for the report card, so, so as the chancellor's office said, these are aspirational, nobody's really going to get graded on it, they just want us to kind of look at being intentional in everything that we do, so that's my comment.
Dr. Verdiyan?
Your point is well taken, Trustee Wa, but as Crystal Colros was mentioning earlier on, when we look at the accreditation standard, when we set those goals, the commission looks at the goals we've set, and where we are with the attainment of those goals, and then the commission says, well, if you can't reach the goal that you set, you need to be able to reach a goal, or set a goal that is reachable. And that's why we, on a regular basis, we analyze the goals we've set, and where we are in relation to the goals, and we do, we, I agree with you on the college, I agree also that sometimes we need to have those aspirational goals, that's where we would like to be in the best case scenario, but we have to be, that's, we, we need to be able to balance the two, the aspirational one and the goals that we are supposed to set that are achievable for the commission. And I think right now, we, we've done a wonderful job at, at reaching that, and we thank you again for the comments you made on that.
So, I, I would like to recommend, you know, as we go throughout the year, if we could have, it might be helpful to have maybe some, some continuous reporting, so not waiting until the end of the year to report the success, but maybe do quarterly reports so that we know whether or not we're exceeding the goal, and I think that would be helpful for the trustees, because, as I said, I mean, it's, it's great to know that we, we increased numbers, but if we're only increasing by two students and we put a million dollars into it, you know, we got to really think about that.
We, we are doing another wonderful job at that, too, because we're evaluating everything what we're doing right now, and if we cannot expand the program, we look very seriously as whether we need to be putting that kind of money in a program that serves 25 students only.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Superintendent's report.
I would like to start my report by paying tribute to a woman who was part of our community for more than half a century. Haroldine Gardner, who passed away May 19th, started her job at our college on February 1, 1963. When she left PCC in March, after having worked in nearly every department on our campus, and played a key role in the formation of our classified union, she had logged 54 years of service to the college. In the time she worked here, computers and the internet were invented, men walked on the moon, and our student population skyrocketed. Countless people at PCC have been influenced by Haroldine's expertise, assistance, and unflagging dedication to our college. We will come together next Wednesday, June 14th, at noon, in this very crevelling lounge, to celebrate Haroldine's life and remember her contributions to our community. I hope all of you can join us. My next item is a thank you to Dean Carrie Starbird, who is in the audience tonight with her son, right? The division of mathematics has taken the concept of OER very seriously. Two of the math courses that we offer at this college will use only OER materials. Am I correct, Dean Starbird? We are not ready yet to make a big presentation on all the courses that are using entirely OER, but I wanted to recognize the hard work of the math division and the contribution of Dean Starbird, and we should be able to make a presentation to the board sometimes in the fall semester on where we are with OER. There are a number of celebrations in the weeks to come, as our divisions and programs celebrate the achievements of our students, and I want to thank all the trustees, especially Board President, Trustee Selvage, Trustee Brown, Trustee Fellow, Trustee Wa, Trustee Martin, Trustee Osterling, and Trustee Hilsman, for attending several of those events on campus. Our Veterans Resource Center hosted the National Commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, Brian Duffy, for a campus visit, and a meeting in the president's conference room, in fact, that was about three weeks ago, and VRC leaders were thrilled to host one of the few college visits conducted by the VFW's commander in chief, and point to the meeting as a sign of PCC's stature on the national scene. And at the state level, we have joined the community college's veterans caucus. I would also like to congratulate our new student trustee, and all of the newly elected representatives of the associated students. I look forward to working with the newly elected president, Cali Lamb, I saw her earlier on, and, and her executive team in the year to come. And I'd like to conclude my report by mentioning Dean Amy Almer of the English Division. We thank you again, we thank you for the contribution you've made to the college over the, I believe, almost 20 years you've been dean of the English department, right, and you have hired almost 90% of all the English faculty, and we thank you for that, and we wish you all the best in your retirement, but we also know that you will be coming back in the spring semester as a nat jargon instructor of English, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Student trustee, do you have, oh, excuse me, shared governance?
We're pretty thin over here. The management association has no report this evening, thank you very much.
Thank you. Announcements by shared governance and representatives of the Board of Trustees. Student trustee, do you have any comments or announcements you'd like to make?
Yes, I would like to report on student life, like Dr. Verdiyan stated, awards were given out to students in the social sciences department and the music department. Also, students are getting ready for commencement and finals week. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Actually, I have a couple of things, so. So, on May 26th, I joined Pasadena Unified School District, celebrating the opening of a new state-of-the-art television production studio at John Muir High School. It was just a great event, there was so much energy in the room, it was just wonderful. And at the same time, I was able to meet the new principal, Dr. Gray Lawson, which will be, I guess, he probably already started, and I did say goodbye to my friend, Tim. I would miss him sorely. Okay, I also attended the CEC graduation ceremony with Dr. Bell and all others, which was a great event, and the Plaque and Talent Search Scholarship banquet, which was really, really outstanding, but what was outstanding about it to me was the guests, the keynote speaker. You know, we talked about diversity, that's when, really, my eyes really were open, because I could never imagine a student having to choose between paying his rent to go to college, and choosing to live in his car, just to get a degree. I know, I know, I don't know about you, but I just, that is something that, I was just touched, I could not believe that he had to do that, but he graduated, and he came back, and he was a keynote speaker, and these are the stories that student, you really don't know what they're going through, when they're here trying to just better themselves, came from Costa Rica, or from Mexico, or Nicaragua, trying to make a living, and it's just awesome, so, I applaud you tonight for passing that, what is it that we passed? The UOP. And it is just beautiful, because we're, we're giving so much to these students, and some, and what's good is that they come back and share their stories, they encourage, they encourage each other, they come and they're encouraged, they plan to speak, they plan to say it, and they come back, and they, it's beautiful, so, I get a little emotional because I was there once, so, that's my report.
Thank you, Trustee Hilsman.
Yeah, I have nothing to report, but I wanted to just note Assemblyman Chris Holden's bill in the, which has passed the assembly, and is now under the state senate, which could be a great boon for our students, it's the proposal, I can't, I really don't know the details of it, but it's going to help out with transportation, which has been a huge cost for our students, and it can be really a burden paying for that, and Metro hasn't been very cooperative, so hopefully we'll, the legislature will find some solutions to it, and also, my thanks to the dean of the math department, because I think that OER is a great thing, and it's another thing that you can put, if you think about students who are spending $400 or $500 a semester on books, and you multiply that by 100 students, you know, that's a $50,000, whatever the math is, savings for kids, and as somebody who's been dealt with the publishing industry, I know that this can be, they can really gouge, you know, three sentences in an algebra book, and then, in a second year, and you're paying through the nose, so, congratulations on that.
Trustee Oster, excuse me, Trustee Wa.
Yes, I wanted to report that I had attended the Veterans Community Appreciation Tea today, and it was really nice, they, what they do is, every, every year, the VRC honors community members who have come in to help the veterans, and special recognition was given to community members who especially provided mentoring and tutoring resources to the VRC. This is a great event, it's really nice to, to see that community comes in and supports. I also attended the South Pasadena Chamber of Commerce, we have a shop talk once a month, and so I presented for PCC, and they were especially interested in hearing the number of programs that we have, the college promise, the guided pathways, and, and I talked, and I, I always think it's important to put out a call to action, so people know what they can do, you know, how can the community come in and help, so I would say that South Pasadena community is geared up and ready to go to help PCC. South Pasadena is one of those communities that's very, that thrives on small businesses, entrepreneurship, so they're not, they don't have big box stores in the community, and so, so I gave, I, the call was to come in and help on resources to be advisors to us and workforce, and they're really excited about the things that we're doing here at PCC, and really want to come in and help our students, you know, and we're not, although we have great faculty and administration, it really takes our community to come in and complete this partnership, and to make everything really work for us. I also attended the groundbreaking for the San Marino Unified Barth Athletic Center, so the barths are also contributors to our PCC foundation, and a number of our legislative officials were there, including Supervisor Catherine Barker, who recalled days of attending gym in her little red shorts over there in a 1935 gymnasium, so she was happy to see that they're finally going to build a new gym. And finally, I wanted to thank Dr. Bell for once again sponsoring the Pasadena Playhouse event, so there are two plays that Pasadena moved into their agenda, into their, their programs this year, because they focused on kind of things that are happening in civic, for civic engagement discussion, so one, the first one was on Anton Scalia, so the previous Supreme Court, and the second one is on the Japanese internment, so we hold these truths, and it's about Gordon Hira- So we hold these truths and it's about Gordon Hirabayashi, who is one of the dissenters who stood up against the Japanese-Americans being interned. And so Dr. Bell has been a great supporter of, and as well as many of our faculty have been great supporters of making sure that our students and our community and the college have a chance to see it. So I think you're opening up for Thursday nights if there's tickets available. Is that correct, Dr. Bell?
Correct.
Yeah, so I hope people, I hope our students take advantage of it. I hope our community takes advantage of it. So thank you for doing that.
Just saying, I'm going to just say I'm going to miss Dean Ulmer. He's been a great run. He's been sensational. Did an amazing job.
Trustee Osterling?
Last week I had the opportunity to attend the banquet for EOP and the Foster Care Youth Awards. And it really was inspiring in what my own personal vision of what community colleges can and should be. And to see these young men and women who came from disadvantaged backgrounds and succeed in the resources that we apply at Pasadena City College to help them do that is truly inspiring. I only wish, it's quite a robust list of events and programs that we put on before graduation, and I only wish that I had time to attend even more of them. I've been encouraging everybody to attend our LACSTAS meetings. I'm the representative from the PCC Board, LACSTAS, the Los Angeles County School Trustees Association. And our next upcoming event, nobody here will have an excuse not to attend, because we're going to host it right here at PCC, right here in Krevling. And our guest speaker will be our new county supervisor, Catherine Barger. So I encourage everybody to attend that. That will be on Monday, July 31st. So put that on your calendar. Thank you.
And Trustee Osterling is not just the rep, he's actually the president of LACSTAS this year.
Thank you. This is a time of years, Dr. Verdi had mentioned, that there are a lot of ceremonies and recognitions and all that. I've been to, I don't know, probably about eight of them. And it's extraordinarily rewarding, it's even moving often going to these meetings and ceremonies and hearing what the accomplishments have been for the students that are being recognized there. One that I didn't even know existed, but I've been to it now for three times, that is the high school graduation that we offer. PCC offers a high school diploma. It's not a GED. If somebody doesn't have a high school diploma, they can get a high school diploma, genuine high school diploma, through PCC. And when they fill out a job application, it doesn't say, oh, GED, they've got a diploma. Two years ago, it was particularly moving when a gentleman who was sitting next to me at the lunch and I were chatting, and, you know, he looked a good deal older than most of the people that were getting their high school diplomas. I mean, they're, they're over 18. But I asked him, well, how he came to get into the program. And he said that he had been dropped out of Pasadena High School. He had gone into the industry of building out interiors for custom mobile homes and touring homes, buses and all that. And he worked his way up to where he was, you know, running crews to do this. And then a really bad recession hit, well, everybody remembers that. And he lost his job. And he told me, he said, do you know how hard it is for a 52-year-old man without a high school diploma to get a job? And that was really, really something. And he was motivated, he was going to fix that. And after, you know, he went through that story, he mentioned that he was interested in post-production type of work with music and entertainment. And I think this was on a Friday of a week, when on Saturday evening, we were going to have a performance over at Westerbeck Hall. And I asked him if he was busy the next evening and that if he came there, I would introduce him to the dean of the School of Arts and Performing Arts, Visual and Performing Arts. And sure enough, he showed up and I introduced him to Dean Arnwein and just kind of an introduction. And Gene Arnwein asked him what his interests were, and he talked about post-production. And Gene Arnwein says, well, you know, we've got a special kind of equipment we use here to teach our students. And he said, oh, I've got that at home. And so it was a match made in heaven. And so I'm not sure if he completely followed through, but that's the sort of thing that comes out in these graduations for the high school. The kids are getting the high school diplomas, excuse me, the adults are getting the high school diplomas are really something. And that concludes my comments. Proposed future board business meeting dates. Dr. Verdi, do we have any changes?
I just want to bring to everyone's attention that the next board meeting on June 21st will start with a closed session and then we will go back into a very short business meeting to approve the new hires, because most of them will be starting on the 1st of July, not most of them, the administrators will be starting on the 1st of July, and so they will need to be approved prior to that. And also, many of the faculty members would like to be approved earlier on before they make the move from the East Coast to here. Otherwise, we will have to wait for, I believe, July 27th for the next board, next business meeting. And then following that short business meeting where we will approve the new hires, then we will go into the spring retreat.
Thank you. Next item is proposed future agenda items. And if any trustees have any suggestions for the retreat, that would be particularly pertinent this time. I think Mr. Martin, Trustee Martin was first?
Actually, not retreat-esque necessarily, but we had Mr. Furman, a meeting or so ago, alert us to the ever-present cyber threats that are present in the world. So I was hoping, either as a short report or as a short agenda item, that we'd have a high-level overview of cybersecurity for our district.
Our goal is to have such a presentation, I believe, on the 27th of July, right? The meeting in July, there will be a brief presentation on that.
That's fine.
We already have that on schedule.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Wa.
So that also tied in with the requests I made last board meeting, that we have a little further discussion, a little more in-depth discussion on the technology master plan, which I think should also cover some of the security issues. So maybe if we could schedule earlier. I also wanted to make a recommendation. I saw that there were a number of questions from my colleagues on the EEO, and I had a number of questions. So I know that to get the plan out, you know, we had a deadline and the chancellor's office is looking at certain things. But I also think that in terms of the kinds of questions that we, the trustees, asked, some of this does, I think, I think that we could have benefited maybe from a little more discussion about the EEO plan. And so maybe that will help us set sort of a tenor for future goals. So if we could maybe have a, schedule that with a little more in-depth discussion at some future meeting, I think that would be great. The other thing I would like to recommend is that with the AV22 Transit Bill on the horizon, I think that's, and thank you, Trustee Osterling, for bringing that to everyone's attention, that it was, had passed the Assembly. The transit issue has been something that we have discussed here at PCC. We've been working with the students on it. And so I know that you had asked for recommendations on what we would want to look at in terms of a study. So I would like to maybe suggest that the Legislative Committee Subcommittee that we meet again, we discuss it and see whether or not, what other things we might want to move forward on that would be helpful for our students.
We have done a study on that. Do we have the results of the study yet, Dr. Story?
Yeah, we've hired a consultant and they're currently conducting, they're in the final stages of performing the study. It should be done by the end of this month.
So maybe we could schedule a meeting and then review the results, see how it fits in with the bill. Great.
Trustee Brown?
Okay, so I just wanted to, clarification. On July, our meeting is on the 4th. I see it in red here.
Yes, I believe so. It is on July.
The only meeting we have is July 26?
Yes.
That's correct?
Yes.
I'm making plans. Okay, cool.
We all are.
We all are.
You're on here.
Any other comments? I'd like to just elaborate a little bit on the transportation. The Holden's bill, it gets passed the Assembly. We're getting very close to the end of the session. Are there people making noises about how likely it is to be successful this close to the end of the session? Anybody heard anything?
I think right now it's, I've heard that it's likely to be approved. It seems, there seems to be a lot of support in Sacramento. And I know there's been a call for many of our communities to send out letters of appreciation to the Assembly members who have passed this, to let them know that we're all behind this. So I can send out that link again if anybody is interested, but I know I've sent it out to some of the school districts and asked them to send out letters of support.
Thank you. If there is no further discussion of items for future agenda, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.